To call to order the September 23 meeting of the Raleigh Planning Commission. Welcome to those present today and those joining us online. My name is Nicole Bennett, Chair of the Planning Commission. We begin each meeting with an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Is anyone here this morning who would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda, which includes approval of the September 9th meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes? I had a couple. On page three, right before new business beside in favor, it says Chair Bennett and Mr. Bennett, and that should be Mr. Burnett. And then on page four, under F2, it says Ashley applicant, and I think it's supposed to be Ashley Honeycutter Raza. That's all I had. It was on page four. Could I get, did anyone have anything else? Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes with those edits?
So moved.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor? That was unanimous. Thank you. We have one committee report coming out of our text change committee. I'll turn it over to the Chair of Text Change, Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Text Change Committee did not have quorum, and we did not meet last week, so this has come back to the full commission agenda for us to either send back to committee or to discuss here and dispose of as we see fit. I've heard that Commissioner Fox has requested that this go back to our October Text Change Committee meeting, and unless there was any objections from others on the commission or if staff had strong feelings about it, I would like, I'll make a move at the appropriate time to move this back to the Text Change Committee on October 15th.
Any objections to moving this back to committee? Okay.
So I move that the TC 324 get moved back to the Text Change Committee and to be heard on October 15th.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. We don't have any old business items, so we'll move right to new business. I forgot to mention when we got started, we have a hard stop today at 11 because of another meeting that's going to be in here, so we will move as efficiently as we can. First up, under new business, is rezoning Z 925 4500 Western Boulevard. We'll turn it over to staff for presentation.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Matthew Clem, Raleigh Planning and Development, to deliver the report on Z 925 located at 4500 Western Boulevard. You may know this as the Kmart site on Western Boulevard between Blue Ridge Road and 440. The request is to rezone over 12 acres from CX 5 with the special highway overlay district and the special parking overlay district and the TOD to CX 20 with zoning conditions and the TOD. Your deadline for action is November 22nd. So you can see a mix of zoning in the area and the hatched overlays, commercial mixed use, 12 and 5 stories. There are some residential zoning to the west and farther to the south and east and some office mixed use as well. This is an aerial view of the site. You can see it's a large 12-acre site containing an old Kmart building and a parking lot to serve it. And you can see the Divergent Diamond interchange in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. A view of the site as it looks today. Zoning conditions limit some uses that would otherwise be permitted in the commercial mixed-use district and also provide six scenarios for various entitlement outcomes when developed. Also, there is a zoning condition that limits building height to 12 stories within 150 feet to the properties to the west, and I'll show you where that is. So effectively, the first 50 feet of the property here are limited to 12 stories in building height, and that's roughly 150 feet to the properties to the west across Blue Ridge Road. Again, Bill 2s are staying the same. The TOD is in place, which recommends, or excuse me, which requires the urban general urban general design standards for frontage, so the Bill 2 doesn't change. Entitlements here reflect the change and limits in the zoning conditions. There's a lower bike score than the city average, is higher on all the other transportation and energy analysis metrics. You can see the site is currently served by the Route 9 and Route 11. Adding to the housing supply with this request, no subsidized units included, but checking all the boxes on our affordability analysis. The area, folks who live in the area are as likely to be racial minorities as the rest of the city, so on par with that, with the city as a whole, similarly with levels of income, and rent increases have gone up slightly higher than the rest of the city as well. Consistent with the future land use map designation of community mixed use, is consistent with the urban form map as well. This map shows the transit station area for the Bus Rapid Transit Corridor, which is under design at the moment. The stop is planned for Western and Blue Ridge, so the site is right at the core of that designation. And again, the TOD overlay district requires the urban general frontage for development. Consistent with the future land use map and urban form, again, a list of policies related to compact development, capitalizing on transit access, transit station area recommended heights, greenhouse gas reduction, again, a lot of TOD and urban form. There are two station, there are two small area plans that have policies for the site. The request is consistent with these policies. Two of the policies in the Western Boulevard corridor study and the Arena Blue Ridge study as well have specific policies for redevelopment of the Kmart site, so consistent with those. The site is inconsistent with zoning and infrastructure impacts and the response time standards due to the existing levels of fire protection service. As you know, the City Council has adopted the Fire Service Master Plan to address these issues. Also inconsistent with the forested buffers policy related to removing the special highway overlay district, which requires the preservation of trees on the site. And I'll go back quickly to show you the site again. There is a tree stand here that would not be protected or conserved based on the standards of the shod. However, standard tree conservation area would apply to developments of this size and scale, just like throughout the city. There are no outstanding issues, and the applicants are here for a presentation as well.
Thank you, Matt. Moving to public comment, the applicant and those in support have 10 minutes.
Good morning, Chair Bennett. I tried to clear my throat. And members of the Planning Commission, Jason Barron with Morning Star Law Group here on behalf of the applicant and the owner, City Platt. Just want to provide a little bit of overview and maybe some context associated with what's going on for the Kmart site. I'm excited to be here. I've been in Raleigh since 94, well, the exception of the time that I went away to law school for three years, and the Kmart site has always been the Kmart site, and it's always been one of those sites as a, you know, if you're interested in planning, if you're interested in development, it's always been one of those sites that has felt underutilized, even when I got here in 1994, and it's exciting to see some things happening on the ground as well as the ground being laid for future redevelopment of the site. And I'm going to run through the slides that the staff has covered, that Matthew has covered with respect to the comprehensive plan analysis. Again, it's Zone CX 5. I'm going to move through these pretty quickly. It's the transit overlay district, I believe, is significant because it speaks to the building height that's being requested in this instance. As you're aware, we're rezoning or seeking rezoning from CX 5 to CX 20 conditional use, and we believe the conditions that are being offered in the 20-story height is certainly supported by the recommendations of the transit overlay district. And so it is in a frequent transit area. As you can see, it's kind of in the heart of that frequent transit area. The heart intersection is really where that frequent transit area exists. And this is an excerpt from the ETOD, the Equitable Transit Overlay Development Guidelines, which speak to the type of station that's located in this, that is planned for this area, and that's an emerging urban center. And that, as you can see, kind of in the bottom right-hand corner there, that's where that heights of up to 20 stories is recommended. So it's in, it's in the comprehensive plan as well as in the ETOD relative to kind of what the future buildout of this site is intended to be. With respect to the 150 feet to, that, within 150 feet of the properties along Blue Ridge, that really relates to the transition areas because that's low to medium, excuse me, moderate residential across the street. And just to further kind of clarify, that area that Matthew was talking about, we prepared this exhibit, which kind of shows generally what 150 feet measured from those properties is. And so it clips a small portion of the site where that 12 stories would be the maximum building height, and that's consistent. We did some quick math, although it shouldn't, it should have been quicker just based on simple geometry, but it's been a long time since I've been in a geometry class. But if, just looking at the UDO requirements for transition areas, to kind of taking that 45-degree angle and a 150-foot building height would essentially be what you would see in those areas, so that 12 stories that we're requesting is consistent with what the UDO would otherwise require as well. This is a three-dimensional kind of, this is what is on the ground today, although it's not today. This is the best aerial that is available through Google Earth, and I'm going to walk you through a little bit about what's happening, kind of what the context is. And so, and I'm going to show you some slides. As you're probably aware, if you've been by the site, things are looking a little bit different. There's some facade work that has already started on the existing Kmart building. There is some paving work that is already happening in, in the parking areas, the vast surface parking area. And so what is happening right now is City Platt, who's the owner of the property, is making in excess of a $10 million investment in the current building to reoccupy that building with uses that are far more interesting than the old Kmart that is no longer there, as well as the All-Star batting cages that are no longer there. And so they've got some entertainment uses, they've got a cafe. They've been in close contact with folks in the community, including the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance, related to kind of what folks would like to see in this area, and the tenants that they're signing up are consistent with the conversations that they've had with those folks. And so this is just some imagery associated with their, their vision for what the existing building is going to be, and this is the work that's currently being done. And so that's the same hard corner, kind of shows you what it is today and what the plan is in the long term. As you can see, this is paving work. These were pictures that were taken as of Friday. There's, there's a lot of work that's happening, and again, the point being that this is, this is essentially phase zero, what is happening in the existing building and the retenanting that's happening, and the zoning that's before you today is really to kind of create phase one. And that is, okay, once this stabilizes, once the significant investment that they're making in the existing building occurs, they get the tenants in there, they create some life, then they're going to come back through and, and redevelop that parking lot, that mass, massive sea of parking that you see right now will go away. When that occurs, we don't know, but that their vision is to create the entitlement so that it will be complementary to what's going on on the ground. There's some more facade inspirations for the existing building. They've got a couple of confirmed tenants, and you may have read about this in the Triangle Business Journal, it's reported in a couple of locations, the tenants that they've signed up. So they've got a cafe, they've got billiards and bowling. And so, again, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context. We've had two neighborhood meetings, which you're aware is what's required. The, the feedback we've received from the community has been very good, which has been a pleasant, a pleasant surprise a little bit, but also, it's always fun to work on a zoning case where folks generally are encouraging what's going on. I think that's reflective of everybody's belief that what has been there for an extended period of time is an underutilized site. It's an eyesore right now, and that what's happening is really going to pave the way for future redevelopment. And so with that, we're here to answer any questions that you all may have, but would certainly request you all's recommendation in favor of the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in support of this item? Okay, then those in opposition have a total of 10 minutes. Okay, seeing no opposition, we'll bring it back to the table for questions and comments Commissioner Haver?
Yeah, I'd never like to go first. I was hoping somebody else would.
You're up.
I'm up. Just wanted some clarification, Jason, on that 150 feet. What is the, what is the width of the purple area? I mean, you're taking that 150-foot dimension from the right-of-way or property line slash across the street. What's the dimension on that?
It's roughly 50 feet. Yeah, that purple area is what is internal to our site, and it's about 50 feet.
So that's a 12-story limit there?
Yes. So within 50 feet, the tallest buildings you would have adjacent to Blue Ridge would be 12 stories. And then beyond that 50, beyond that purple area would be where the 20-story buildings would be permitted.
So ultimately, it, it seems like that building's going to set back on phase one or phase two, whatever, whatever it's going to be, but there's going to be 50 feet of a 12-story building, and then you're going to go up 20 from there?
Yeah, or, you know, theoretically, it could be a 12-story building that spans further than that 50 feet. You know, it really, they haven't gotten to that level of design of that portion of the site. At a minimum, we know there won't be 20 stories within 50 feet of Blue Ridge. How that design process ends up working when they get to site plan, we just don't know right now.
Yeah, that's an expensive 50-feet building.
It is. Yeah.
The reason I ask again is just my, my concern with the residences across the street. So first of all, thank you for taking that into consideration, but, and then secondly, love that y'all are developing the site. I'm in favor of the project. Don't want you to spend any money. You don't need to on phase zero, but is there any way we can get some additional shade trees in that parking lot? You even said it was a sea of parking. It's just, it's nasty.
Yeah.
And I know eventually they're going to come out, but you just said you don't know when that's going to be. It could be a number of years, and it's just unfortunate that we allowed massive asphalt areas like that, which, you know, aren't very sustainable, they're not comfortable. And so just asking for some consideration on shade trees. I know it's money that's going to go down the drain, but
Sure.
It kind of needs it, so.
Yeah, happy to pass that. And, you know, again, they're making a significant investment in the existing building. They're retenanting the site with tenants who are going to be there for an extended period of time. I mean, these aren't one-year leases, these are extended leases, significant investments. So I imagine there will be improvements beyond kind of what you see to the building, just to keep those folks happy, because they're going to want their people, they're going to want their patrons to want to show up to the center.
Additional questions or comments?
Good morning, Jason. What's the community engagement been like? I know there's been a lot of back and forth with traffic patterns and currently already the, how the entire, I guess, the interstate, how it ties into the area is very confusing at times, but what is the neighborhood, I guess, feedback been about in support of it? Any recommendations and so on and so forth? Because I'm looking at the, it looks like one of the meetings, there were only like three people there.
Yeah, our, our most recent neighborhood meeting. So our first meeting was, was decently attended. Most folks were just kind of curious about what's going on, haven't heard any opposition to date, none at all. Generally speaking, like I said, everybody has been supportive of redevelopment of the Kmart shopping center that everybody affectionately refers to. Our, our second neighborhood meeting, yeah, we had three, we had three folks show up. One was a property manager for some sites around the corner. The other folks were employees of the residential building to our north, again, just kind of curious as to what was going on. So I, I'm not going to tell you that everybody's showed up and said, this is the greatest thing ever, but nobody's shown up and said, we have problems.
Other questions or comments? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve rezoning case Z 925 and to adopt the approved consistency statement contained in today's agenda materials.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to our second new business item, we have rezoning Z 2325 Gorman Street. We'll turn to staff for a presentation.
Good morning, Chair Bennett. Members of the Planning Commission, Matthew Burns with Planning and Development. This is a request to rezone about a three-quarter acre site from Residential 10 with special residential parking overlay to residential mixed-use four stories with conditions maintaining the overlay, and your deadline for action is November 22nd. So this site is approximately a half-mile south of the intersection of Western Boulevard and Gorman Street, and zoning in the area is predominantly residential and mixed-use. The area features a variety of building types, including detached and attached houses and townhomes and apartments. The site is about a half-mile west of North Carolina State University and a half-mile east of the Kentwood Park. There is a relatively high concentration of student housing in this area, which I'm highlighting here in this smaller-scale map. Here are a few views of the site. So there is an existing garden-style apartment on the property that dates to 1980. The applicant's proposing two zoning conditions, the first of which would limit the maximum number of dwelling units to 40, and the second, which would limit maximum building height to 50 feet. So the request would increase the number of units that could potentially be built on-site. The RX district also has slightly less restrictive setbacks, as well as it would permit up to 4,000 square feet of office and/or retail uses on the property, subject to limited use standards, which reduce their size and scale overall. That includes a limit on hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Site has an average walk score and above-average transit and bike scores. The area also has below-average transportation costs and above-average access to jobs. And I'll get into the transportation in a second. So the site is very conveniently located in terms of transit. There is a bus drop about 200 feet northeast of the site along Gorman Street. That's for Go Raleigh Route 12 method. Site also has convenient access to the Wolf Line, which offers fare-free transit, and it's about 800 feet from several Wolf Line routes to the south of the property. The request would add to the housing supply, does not include subsidized units, would permit a variety of housing types, allow smaller units, and is within walking distance of a variety of transit options. Area residents are more likely to be racial minorities compared to the city average, and more likely to be low-income than the city average, and the cost of rent has increased 63% since 2016 and 41% since 2019, both of which are higher than the citywide averages. So the requested RX4 district is consistent with medium-scale residential. Although the applicant is requesting up to four stories of height, they are limiting a heightened feet to what is more equivalent to an RX3 district. There is no urban form guidance for the site, and the applicant's not proposing a present frontage. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Consistent policies include those related to compact development and mixed-use development, as well as housing variety, student-oriented housing. Inconsistent policies are related to response time standards for fire service, and there are no outstanding issues, and your deadline for action is November 22nd. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Matthew. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes.
Good morning. Isabel Maddox here on behalf of NC Student Rentals LLC. My client principal, Ohad Chevali, is here as well. He's the manager of that LLC. This is a, what I think is a straightforward case in an area of town where it's, it is predominantly student housing. There's a mix of townhouses, apartments, some single-family detached, but not very much right here. We are requesting an OX, I mean, excuse me, an RX4 designation with retaining the special residential parking overlay in this case. The developer is anticipating redeveloping his apartments with some small-scale retail, maybe. He really is excited about the prospect of putting a small coffee shop or small store on the ground floor, realizing that the limitations, you know, are pretty tight spatially, space, space-wise. But it is on a corner, and so we could, you know, avail ourselves of the 4,000-foot maximum retail uses. The two conditions are 40 units max and building height not to exceed 50. That's intended to mirror the three-story limit. So even though in residential, you can fit four stories frequently in, in a little bit lower height than you can on retail. So the idea would be to keep it at a three-story height, but possibly do four stories. This is sort of a conceptual building elevation. We haven't really designed a site plan, we haven't engineered a site plan, we haven't, haven't had it designed architecturally, but this is type of building we're talking about. You can see that they propose a cafe and a convenience store on the ground floor. Again, very conceptual. This, this case is overall consistent with the comp plan, and there's some confusion in the staff report about whether it's moderate or medium density. We feel like, given the proximity to the frequent transit area, and it's not in the frequent transit area per se, but we're very close, and we are very close to Western Boulevard, BRT corridor, and on two different transit lines, or, you know, within walking distance of the Wolf Line and the, you know, City of Raleigh, Go Raleigh bus route. If you look at the moderate-density residential, it recommends multiple housing types, including small apartments. It, it even recommends RX3 or RX4 in higher density and small-scale retail when close to high levels of transit, which we think is the case here. We've got medium-density located at the same intersection, so just across the street, we've got, you know, and you can see that in the, in the, in the zoning map, you can see the orange here and here and here, all our RX3 zone properties, all sort of fitting into the medium category. We're adding additional housing units in close proximity to the frequent transit, the BRT on Western, the major transit corridors for Gorman, Tryon Road, and Avant Ferry will provide additional housing for NC State and Meredith. And we'll facilitate redevelopment. You heard Matthew say this is, these apartments were built in 1980, so that's 45 years old, and they're, student housing gets some pretty hard wear and tear, as you might imagine. So excited about possibly redevelopment, redevelopment of this obsolete housing, and we'll limit the height to 50 feet. And available for any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, Isabel. Didn't need to be reminded that 1980 was 45 years ago, though.
Listen, don't tell me that.
Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this item? Those in opposition have a total of 10 minutes. Okay, seeing no opposition, we'll bring it back to the table. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Shelburne?
I was very disappointed to learn that at the last meeting, we apparently voted down an opportunity to add to rental housing supply, and so I'm looking forward to voting for this one today.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Makai?
I know that you said that you want this to add to the housing for NC State and Meredith. Do you have any idea, without subsidized housing, how much the cost of housing would be?
Yeah, I really don't. It's really hard to predict that because right now, we don't have a development plan that's been designed and engineered. So anything that we would say today would be sadly probably higher by the time we get this redeveloped and built. So I really can't tell you, but I, it is most likely student housing, and, you know, that's getting, is getting more and more expensive. So I, my client's here, he could maybe sort of
I would like to, just a question. If we're talking about providing housing for students, since students are
Will you come forward and talk in terms of, you know, if, if you had these units today in today's dollars, what do you think that a unit, per unit would be? Do you have any idea? It's a hard thing to say.
Yeah. Hey, good morning. I can tell you that a lot of our
I can tell you that a lot of our other properties, we get kids coming in, students mostly coming in, from other developed areas, student housing up and down Hillsborough. And the reason they come to us is because they were lower than what the Stanhope, for example, for example, would ask, or the Standard, or all those places that have been developed up and down on Hillsborough Street. So in today's market, it's really, it really varies because the types of student housing varies accordingly. So you have everything from single families all the way to apartments and everything in between, older homes, newer homes, a lot of that development. And so if you look for homes anywhere from single bedrooms to four bedrooms, it really, on a per-bedroom basis, it ranges anywhere from like $500 to $1,200 a bedroom. It's really broad because there's so many variables that dictate the pricing.
Is this going to be the type of housing where people have their own dwelling, bedroom, bathroom, but they share a common space? Or is this going to be the type of housing, there's like a standard apartment with bedrooms?
So again, it depends, you're talking about this specific one? So this is what we had in mind, again, besides the retail, what we were thinking could be a real benefit to the whole neighborhood, not just to the residents of the building. We actually have an apartment setting in mind. Again, this is all very preliminary. We haven't seen an engineer or an architect right now. We're just looking at opportunities. But the idea we have is to have individual apartments, there might be a common area downstairs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Haver?
Thank you. Appreciate the willingness for the height limitation. I'd like to ask the applicant if there would be any consideration to just at least eliminate a zero-foot rear yard to that property to the north. Give a little bit of breathing room there. Certainly, at some point, it'll be redeveloped, but zero-foot rear yard against that small lot to the north seems excessive to go 50 feet at a zero foot. So I'd like to see if you would consider something other than zero feet.
Don't we have a, isn't there a 10 or 20-foot setback there?
I'll rely on staff for that.
Yeah, so a neighborhood transition would apply. So the, what would apply here would be a Zone A minimum, which is a minimum 10-foot
That answer your question? Okay. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Otwell?
With regards to Z2325, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated September 23rd, 2025, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
Do you have a second? Commissioner Otwell made the motion. Commissioner Burnett seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Commissioner Omakay, would you like to state why you're in opposition for the record?
I just think the cost in the area for housing for students might be a little steep, and the development of the space doesn't necessarily look like something that's in a residential area. Personally, for me, I'm, that's just my opinion. I'm not against the development at all. I just personally don't agree.
Thank you. We will move on to our final new business item, rezoning Z2525, 101 North Bloodworth Street.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Arthur Cashwell the Fourth. I'm here to present rezoning case Z-2525 for 101 North Bloodworth Street. The site is approximately 0.09 acres in size, with a length of about 102 feet and a width of approximately 39 feet. It is currently developed with a single-unit dwelling constructed in 2006. The site's current zoning is R10 with historic overlay district, with the general historic overlay district and the neighborhood conservation overlay district. The applicant has requested rezoning to neighborhood mixed-use three stories with a detached frontage, conditional use, with historic overlay district, with the general historic overlay district and a neighborhood conservation overlay district. According to the future land use map, the area is designated neighborhood mixed-use, which aligns with the intent of the R10 zoning district. On September 10th of 2025, the Raleigh Historic Development Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request with a vote of 9 to 2, and the planning commission deadline for action is November 22nd, 2025. The surrounding zoning pattern is predominantly downtown mixed-use in R10. All adjacent properties are zoned R10. However, within 1,000 feet of the site, there are existing office mixed-use, neighborhood mixed-use, and residential mixed-use. This reflects a transition toward more intensive and mixed-use development patterns. This map represents a zoomed-out aerial view of the proposed rezoning site, outlined in yellow at the intersection of East Edington Street and North Bloodworth Street. The site lies roughly 50 feet from the edge of the downtown boundary and about 500 feet from New Bern Place Park. This image shows an aerial view of the site at the intersection of East Edington Street and North Bloodworth Street. This image shows the site from East Edington Street. This image shows the site from North Bloodworth Street. There are no pre-existing zoning conditions on the site. However, the applicant has proposed the following one new condition developed from community feedback. The following principal uses as listed in the UDO Section 6.1.4 and otherwise permitted, limited, or special uses in a neighborhood mixed-use zoning district shall be prohibited. The first would be vehicle fuel sales, vehicle sales rental, vehicle repair, daycare, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, parking, restaurant, bars, or shopping centers. When it comes to height, the height increases slightly from resident from R10 with HUD-G and NCOD from slightly 45 feet in three stories to 50 feet in three stories. Setbacks for the front expands flexibility from a fixed 10-foot to a range of 10 to 25 feet. Side street is reduced from 10 feet to zero feet. Side lot is reduced from five feet to zero feet. The rear, the range is widened from a fixed of 20 feet to 20 to 30 feet. In residential units, they remain capped at two units. The non-residential uses newly allows up to 2,850 square feet of office space and 950 square feet of retail space, which is, however, under the current zoning, none are currently permitted. Overall, the rezoning maintains the same residential capacity, but it introduces opportunities for small-scale office and retail uses, slightly increases height, and provides more flexible setbacks consistent with mixed-use urban character. In terms of walkability, the site score is 89, which is far above the city average of 31, indicating most daily needs can be met on foot. In terms of transit access, with a score of 74, the site offers strong public transit access compared to the city average of 30, which reduces the reliance on cars. Terms of bikeability, the site's score of 91 is much higher than the city average of 41, showing excellent bike friendliness. In terms of transportation costs, the HUD Low Transportation Cost Index score of 88 suggests households will here spend less of their income on transportation than in the most areas nationally. Job access, a HUD Jobs Proximity Index of 97 reflects very strong access to employment opportunities nearby. Overall, the site is exceptionally well-connected for walking, biking, and transit, with low transportation costs and excellent access to jobs, making it far more accessible and sustainable than the citywide average. In terms of transit, proximity to transit, the site is within a quarter-mile of multiple Go Raleigh stops, including stops as close as 360 feet away and North Pearson Street and East Edington Street, with several others within 375 to 572 feet. On the primary routes serving the site, we have Route 1 Capital. We have Route 10 Longview, which connects to Chatham Street. Route 1 Capital connects to downtown Triangle Town Center, and it operates every 15 minutes. Route 15 is Wake Med, connects downtown to New Hope Commons, and that comes every 15 minutes. Additional routes, other services nearby include the Zebulon Windell Raleigh Express and then the Route 55 X Poole Road Express. Overall, the site is very well-served by public transit with multiple frequent routes, including future 10-minute service on Route 1, and bus stops within short walking distance offering strong local and regional connections. In terms of affordability, the housing supply, the rezoning will not add or remove housing units in a cap at two. Affordability, no naturally occurring affordable housing exists on the site, and no subsidized units are included. The rezoning does allow for a broader mix of housing types beyond detached houses, aligning with the city's goal of diversifying housing choices. The site is within walking distance of transit, supporting multimodal access and reduced car dependence. The site area ranks in the 44th percentile on a demographic index compared to the 37th citywide, suggesting a slightly higher level of disadvantage. The population of people of color is lower in the site area, which is 26% than in Raleigh, which is 46%. The share of low-income households is nearly identical, with 26% in the site area and 29% citywide. In terms of linguistic isolation, is absent in the site area, 0% compared to 3% citywide. The percentage of residents without a high school diploma is nearly the same, 7% in the site area versus 8% across Raleigh. The population under age 5 makes up 7% of the site compared to 6% citywide. The population over age 64 represents 9% in the site compared to 11% in Raleigh. And the most notable difference is in housing costs. Median gross rent has increased 62.6% in the site area since 2016, more than double the 25.5 increase citywide. The proposed rezoning from R10 with HUD-G and NCOD to neighborhood mixed-use 3-DECU with HUD-G and NCOD is consistent with the site's future land use map designation of neighborhood mixed-use. The future land use map designates the site as neighborhood mixed-use, which is intended for small-scale pedestrian-oriented shopping areas serving nearby neighborhoods. Typical uses include corner stores, restaurants, small offices, and neighborhood services, which support for mixed-use projects that incorporate upper-story housing. Residential development is envisioned at a medium density when paired with commercial uses, and the neighborhood district aligns most appropriately with this designation. The urban form map designates the site within a transit station area, a BRT area, and a frequent transit area. This is where compact, mixed-use, and walkable development is encouraged. Urban frontages such as Urban General or Urban Limited are recommended to promote shallow setbacks, active-building frontages, and pedestrian-friendly streetscapes that support transit investment. The request for DE detached frontage, however, emphasizes residential compatibility with larger setbacks and flexible parking/driveway placement, creating a more suburban pattern. While this may buffer adjacent homes, it is consistent with the urban form map's guidance, which prioritizes urban transit support of frontage and BRT corridors. Let me restate that. The DE frontage is not consistent with the urban form map. The urban form map calls for urban general or urban limited frontage. In terms of the long-range plan analysis, comprehensive plan consistency, the site is consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan, particularly the coordinating land use and transportation vision theme. It supports plan goals, promotes small-scale walkable mixed-use near neighborhoods. It adds housing capacity and transit served areas and encourages context-sensitive infill. The neighborhood mixed-use three alignment concentrates activity within downtown edges and frequent transit corridors while ensuring compatibility through height limits. The historic oversight focuses on any exterior changes, requires a certificate of appropriateness with RHDC review to ensure compatibility with the historic district. The rezoning primarily expands allowable uses rather than enabling major redevelopment. As the historic district and the RHDC will maintain control, changes to the site. This is one of three slides of the consistent policies. This is the second, mainly focusing on transit-oriented development. And this is the last slide for consistent policies. We have two inconsistent policies that focus mainly on frontage. The RHDC recommends approval 9 to 2. It states that the proposed zoning's maximum allowable height matches that of the current base zoning and avoids incentivizing demolition of existing buildings through increased-density entitlements. The detached frontage reinforces neighborhood-scale building width and prioritizes pedestrian access. The historic overlay district, which regulates exterior changes to the property structure and site, will also be retained. There are no outstanding issues associated with this rezoning request. If additional discussion is needed beyond today, the next available opportunity will be at the October 14th meeting. The deadline for the planning commission to act in this case is November 22nd, 2025.
Thank you, Arthur. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes.
Hey, good morning. My name's Michael McKay. My wife Lauren is not here. Our cat is sick, and she is taking care of our cat to the vet. So also, there's no school today for our kids. So as Arthur very adequately went over everything, first, I just wanted to say thank you to Arthur Cashwell, Matthew Burns, and Matthew McGregor, who have helped us navigate this rezoning process. My wife and I purchased the property in June, and we are attempting to rezone it ourselves. I won't go anything that Arthur already covered. Our goal, really, is to operate my wife's business. She started an interior design, residential interior design firm back in 2017, and we're looking for a spot for her to operate that residential interior design firm. Part of the reason we love that property is because it is in a downtown area in Oakwood. It's got a great history. Being a residential interior design firm, we feel like it would be a really good fit. My wife's had multiple clients in Oakwood already and serving, you know, the residential community in that way. Other reasons, we think that the property is a great fit for what we're trying to do. As Arthur mentioned, it's a decently busy intersection along Edington Transit Corridor. I'm a real estate agent, a Realtor, so I, you know, represented ourselves in the buying process. And when I was talking to the other agent, you know, the home had been listed since September 2023. We purchased it in June 2025. A lot of price reductions, so I asked, you know, their agent, what was, what are people's main concerns with the property? And she said, and I quote, "The only negative feedback we ever received was about being located on Edington." And I think, you know, that makes sense, being on a busy corridor might not be as appealing to some folks, but I think it works well for what we're trying to do. We have no desire whatsoever to change anything about the house as far as tearing it down, you know, making it not look residential. We love the fact that we're going to maintain that residential capability with this rezoning. If anything, I think we're viewing the house as sort of a model home for Oakwood. You know, it's right there on that busy intersection. It's got a great, you know, sign that says Historic Oakwood right in front of it. Our goal is really for it to look like a great residential property that we use for my wife's interior design business. So a little bit more about the business. It's an office kind of business, nine-to-five, so no impacts to neighbors on evenings or weekends. As far as the weekdays, I would say low impact. We've investigated multiple parking options nearby as far as lots go that are within, excuse me, within a one-and-a-half to two-block radius. My wife currently has one employee, so, you know, hopefully in the future, maybe more. But as of now, it's two employees with the business. A lot of the client meetings do take place off, I guess, onsite at the client home for obvious reasons, you know? You have to measure and take photos and all that kind of thing. Other appealing things about, you know, that area for us, we want to be an asset to the neighborhood. I'm from Durham. My wife's from Shelby. She went to NC State, so she's lived in Raleigh since 2003. I've lived in Raleigh since we got married in 2008. We lived on Hargett Street when we first got married. We currently live near Village District on Van Dyke. We love Raleigh. We go to church at Vintage Church, which is Moore Square. We've been going there since 2006, actually. So we were both still in college when we started going there. But we love downtown. You know, Lauren McKay Anterior's, which is my wife's company, she's been a longtime supporter even before she started her business in 2017 of the Green Chair Project, which is a local organization you might be familiar with. They provide home furnishing for Raleigh families in need. So we are excited about this possibility of being part of the downtown community, about providing, hopefully, great service through her business, but also just, you know, giving back and being a positive impact to the area there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Anyone else? Anyone else here to speak in support of this case? If not, then the opposition has a total of ten minutes. Please state your name.
Chris Crew, three oh six Elm Street, fifty-year resident of Oakwood. Start with a couple of quotes this morning. Predictability should replace the old flexibility when it comes to development issues. Mitchell Silver on the Comprehensive Plan in the Independent Weekly, ten thirty-one oh seven. It is not the city's responsibility to ensure the profitability of your business plan. James West, city council member at a zoning change hearing nineteen ninety-nine. The comp plan helps us avoid spot zoning. Zoning helps protect our neighborhoods and historic districts. It's just one house for one purpose this time, but it doesn't protect the character of the neighborhood from the actions of future property owners. There's plenty of empty commercial space in Raleigh. Allowing a business-only occupancy on the edge of a historic neighborhood entices other encroachments and sets precedent that will make it hard to deny future requests within the district or the neighborhood. The conditional uses that are suggested are going to be difficult to monitor and enforce in the future. Allowing a three-story business use invites demolition of a structure compatible with the historic character of the district in replacement with something more commercial in nature. This does not add to the housing supply, contrary to the presentation, and there's been considerable evidence of opposition from the neighbors. If you'll check your emails, your mail, and the comments from the two public meetings that have been held on this, I urge you to recommend denial of this proposal for the protection of the character of historic Oakwood and Raleigh's other neighborhoods and historic districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crew. Additional opponents? Please state your name.
My name is Alan Rawls, Oakwood resident. I think this applicant's request is self-serving. They found a property that could be upzoned, and they chose to utilize that. I actually walked here from Oakwood today, so three-quarters of a mile. I like walkable infrastructure when it helps the community, when it helps the neighborhood. From the urban form document, it says, "Add neighborhoods serving uses within short walks of frequent transit, downtown, and existing residence, reducing auto-dependence and emissions." This intended use is an annexed home office. It doesn't serve the neighborhood. There's no walk-up patronage. There's no leveraging the transit corridor. They don't live in the neighborhood, which is fine, but they're going to drive here to work here. That's taking up valuable street parking that's already limited. So I find that the future use plan was to support transit-oriented businesses, transit-oriented opportunities, and this is not transit-oriented. So I requested you not rubber stamp this because it fits the future zoning map, where they're trying to utilize the future zoning map to their personal gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional opponents?
Good morning. My name is Eva Fiedler. I live in Brookhaven, but I'm here because I lived at one eleven North Bloodworth Street for seven years, from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty. I am celebrating my daughter's birthday today, but I still brought her here, brought her home from the hospital to one eleven North Bloodworth Street and two other kids. So I am still very connected to the street because there is an incredible community in Oakwood. So I'm aware of this, and I care about it, even though I don't live there and have any direct stake in it. Mr. McKay and his wife have made a fantastic choice in buying a great house and a great spot, but I disagree with the change in the use, not because it has anything to do with his character or his business, but because this change is not locked into him, who he is, who his wife is, and what their business is, but it changes it for the future. Having lived on this street and having brought three babies home, parking is a problem, and I echo everything that Alan just said and Chris just said. This does not move us toward the goals that are, that were explained earlier. In fact, it really goes contrary, again, not just this business, but what is proposed in the future. So I especially want to echo the concerns of the house that's immediately next door. They could not be here due to illness and a water heater going bad all on the same day. But they have serious concerns about not improving walkability, not improving density, which is something we're very invested in. I mean, my house was one-tenth of an acre, and this one is less. We care about density. We're not in opposition to that. But changing this use to become a business, I mean, I want to come back. I want to come back to the street. I want to come back to this neighborhood. But moving in this direction is contrary to what would make someone want to. It's the things that make Oakwood strong. This does not move in that direction. So I would encourage the buyer to make a home and make a life there. I had a beautiful one there, but not to make it into a business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matthew Brown. Oakwood is not just a beloved neighborhood. It is a beloved tourist attraction for Raleigh. We get thousands of people every holiday. We get thousands of kids on Halloween, and we have visitors every day of the year. And what makes Oakwood such a valuable tourist attraction is not just the historic architecture, but that we are a real neighborhood with human beings. We plant trees and flowers. We decorate for holidays. We give out Halloween candies. If the, if it, you know, Blunt Street has grander houses, but the tourists prefer Oakwood because we're a real neighborhood. Blunt Street is a bunch of offices, so please don't take that away from us. You know, back in the sixties and seventies, the city tried to, wanted to tear down half of Oakwood because it was in the way of the north-south expressway. We had to fight for years and years to save our neighborhood. And now it looks like some in the city think that we're in the way of bus rapid transit. So this future land use map wants to move the people out and have a bunch of offices. Please don't let that happen. We'll fight again. We love our neighborhood. We work very hard to make it a benefit for the city. You know, the city of Raleigh doesn't have a whole lot of tourist attractions. We don't have a historic riverfront or lakefront. We have no mountains. We have no Beale Street Historic District. We have no Biltmore House, but we have Historic Oakwood, and people love it. And it will be a benefit to Raleigh as long as it is a neighborhood. You know that the online portal, the comments are twelve to one against, and that was mostly the neighbors that love our neighborhood, and we want to keep it a neighborhood. Please don't move us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll bring it back to the table. Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Shelburne.
I lived in Oakwood for fifteen years on Bloodworth Street, in fact, and that's where I first owned a home. Also brought a daughter home there, raised her. And while I heard everything said, I personally don't see anything wrong with this proposal. Frankly, I kind of think this kind of thing ought to be allowed by law.
Thank you. Additional questions? Commissioner Burnett.
I want to say thanks to the applicant and those in opposition to this. I've gone back and forth and read a lot of the emails and a lot of the comments just regarding the use case and what it would do regarding changing the character of the neighborhood, the impact on parking. But I thought what was really interesting was that, looking at some of the items that already exist within the Oakwood neighborhood, you have the grocery store or Oakwood Grocery, which is not too far. So that is something that seems to have like a commercial use, and the parking seems to be, or seems not to be, a problem there. Neighborhoods like Oakwood benefit from having the, of a close proximity to a lot of commercial amenities, like the deli spot, like the, I think there's like a Mexican restaurant. And also, I believe there's a barbecue restaurant not too far as well. I think what the applicant is doing is representative of what Raleigh is about, which is people having the possibility to have upward mobility. I also find it interesting that the comment of being self-serving was mentioned when someone on East Street owns two houses. And so you have a small business that is looking to, yeah, increase their business, you know, move into a neighborhood that has commercial businesses that is not going to change the facade of the structure. That's also going to be an asset to the community. So many times, you have a lot of folks that feel that by stuffing out someone's candle, their flame goes out as well. And I just don't think that that is in good spirit, especially when we talk about neighbors. So I would, you know, that being said, I would, I think what the applicant is doing is admirable, and I would be, I would actually be interested in making a motion if the, you know, my colleagues would be in support.
Thank you, Commissioner Burnett. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I have two questions. When it comes to the type of use, maybe this is a question for staff, maybe for the applicant, it sounds like the intended use might fit under the OX designation. I guess, is that correct? And if so, do you know why NX was chosen instead?
Yes, so the use does fit under the OX designation. However, based off the future land use map designation, it calls for neighborhood mixed use. It calls for neighborhood mixed use based off the future land use map. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, and then the second question also for staff. There was a comment that this rezoning might allow for a future demolition of the building. Could you clarify how this change in zoning would change any entitlements about the building structure?
There will be no entitlement to the all still go through the certificate of appropriateness process, and it still go through the RHDC, which focuses on the physical aspects of the building.
So there would be no change?
There'll be no change. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Omakay.
So though there be no change if we approve this, does that mean there won't be any changes in the future?
Not to the physical aspect of it unless, not to the physical aspect of it because this still have to go through the certificate of appropriateness process as far as getting approved, but as far as the rezoning, it will stick with the land. So if the applicant does decide to...
Good morning, everyone. Erin Morton-Pugh, Planning and Development. I am one of the staff liaisons for the Raleigh Historic Development Commission and help administer the city's certificate of appropriateness process. So I just wanted to clarify, in the state of North Carolina, demolition is not able to be denied at any point. So if a property owner requests that, demolition is granted. That could be with the current zoning or with the proposed zoning. You can't stop demolition. So there is no zoning or potential condition that could be offered that would, that would stop that. In terms of whether there will be physical change on the property, following that demolition, any new construction on the lot would need to receive COA approval, and that's generally reviewed for the request's congruity with the special character of the historic district. So we have design standards and a special character essay for this district that would guide that decision. So in terms of the proposed request and any conditions offered, there's no guarantee that there won't be a change to the physical nature of this property, just that it would be regulated through that process as well, in addition to any base zoning. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I was trying to compare the current entitlement versus the new proposed entitlement. So under the current rezoning, I'm sorry, the current zoning or the proposed rezoning, both would have the same limitations and requirements with respect to the facade and structure of the building.
In terms of needing to get that COA zoning permit approval, yes. In terms of any setbacks or height adjustments that are, you know, just coming with the entitlement of those two different base zoning requests, I'll defer to Arthur to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
So the setbacks, they do change when it goes from R ten with HAD-G and NCOD to the neighborhood mixed use three with detached CU. It gives them a more flexibility as far as what they want the setbacks from the front, the side, and the rear from all sides.
Commissioner Omakay, was your question answered?
So if demolition can't be stopped, and it has to in some way fit the character of the neighborhood, then that means that they can go forward demolishing the house and building something that is, as long as it kind of looks like the neighborhood, regardless of the service of the neighborhood, it can go there?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. I have a statement, but I'll wait for Nick to finish talking.
Commissioner Neptune.
Thank you, and I think it's related. I guess I just want to make sure I'm reading this letter from the Raleigh Historic Development Commission correctly, and I think it just touches on this point that the commission, the Historic Development Commission, recommended approval in part because the, this rezoning avoids incentivizing demolition of existing buildings through increased-density entitlements. The detached frontage reinforces neighborhood-scale building widths and prioritizes pedestrian access. And this historic overlay district, HODG, regulates exterior changes to the property structures in sight, which will also be retained. So I guess I, it sounds like on the one hand, I guess, per state law, you know, we can't necessarily, you know, prevent future demolition, but based on the tools at hand and based on at least the Historic Development Commission's review, it seems like this rezoning doesn't necessarily further encourage demolition on site. I'm really, I'm sharing that just as a matter of clarifying for myself, my read of this, and I'm also happy to be corrected if necessary. So maybe colleagues on staff could either affirm?
That's how it reads.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Omakay.
Even to that point, we just heard that they can demolish the building, so encouragement or not.
But they can demolish it today.
Right, but in this redevelopment of it, in demolishing the building that the rezoning that it is today is not for commercial mixed use. So it'd be redeveloped as a home. Is that correct? Not as a business.
Right.
Which are two different things. So in that regard, in my mind, whether it changes this commission's mind or not, I do want to say that Oakwood is a historic district. That sign sitting in front of the building that we're considering rezoning for business use that says historic district in some measure would be voided by the fact that we choose to rezone a business from its own residential uses and purpose. I say that because Oakwood is a community, and it's one of the very few communities we have left in the city, unfortunately. As much as southeast Raleigh is talked about as a community, it really isn't in the way it used to be, but Oakwood still is. Oakwood is a community that talks to each other. They have annual community get-togethers. It is about family. And as much as this same commission voted down rezoning some time ago for land that was out in more of a rural area because some areas should just remain as they are, that was the reasoning why we didn't approve that zoning that was near a school. I can't remember the number of it, but it was like near a school in downzoned land, and they were looking to redevelop it as an apartment complex. And we said, some areas should just stay rural. They should stay as they are. I think that that same realization is not just for rural areas. It is for inner-city areas. It is for communities and neighborhoods like Oakwood. And while I appreciate the buyer buying property in this area, I agree with the residents that buying property in an area that is residential and community to turn it into a business and rezonate is not for the intent that the community intends it to be. And I think that sometimes, and it does not add to the housing supply, but it may add to the increase of affordability in the area. It is not on the BRT line, even though that presentation showed the BRT going up, I guess, one street to the side. Was it East Street? In the staff presentation, it said, showed that the BRT was supposed to go up an adjacent street to this. Northeast Street, Bus Rapid Transit BRT area, that is not the Bus Rapid Transit BRT area just for the sake of the conversation. Bus Rapid BRT area is New Bern Avenue. So I often feel like, just in the last thing, that we wrote it down because there were missing, there was misinformation presented to us. This is misinformation when it comes to whether or not, how close this rezoning is to the BRT line. It is not right there. It's on the adjacent street down, two streets away from where it's proposed to be. I think that they're absolutely correct. We have, maybe not this particular planning commission or city council or county commission, but in the past, it has been asked to not rezone this area, to keep it the way it is. And I think the more we're trying to become, I guess, as a progressive city, I'm using air quotes when we use the word progressive of a city, if this isn't adding to the housing supply, but it may also increase the housing affordability in an area. supply, but it may also increase the housing affordability in the area, and it also is not consistent with the urban land use map, and it is a neighborhood that may be in disruption because somebody wants to hang their marker, though you bought a great property in a great area in a nice neighborhood, maybe move there in the house that you have right now, wherever that is, rezone that. Where do you, like, in my mind? So like, I think that this area doesn't need to be rezoned, this one plot of land doesn't need to be rezoned. Yes, there are other businesses in the area, but those businesses are businesses that naturally serve the community, restaurants, things of that nature. An interior design company doesn't necessarily serve the community. It's a good location for a business, but it doesn't necessarily serve the community, it doesn't necessarily provide economic impact to the community. It said it's walkable and close to existing possible job opportunities, but I'm wondering what job opportunities this is close to that's walkable to it. Like, I know it says that, but knowing that area, I don't know where they would be a walkable proximity to jobs, and if anybody, especially if nobody's going to be living in that house, why does that matter? So I'm not willing to support this for those reasons. That may be reason enough for some of our commissioners to support it, because I'm not, but I also think that it's important for us to be mindful about what we're doing as we're comprehensively building this city. So that's my stand on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Omakay. I don't think any of us would not support it just to go against you.
I think there may be a couple that would.
I don't, I think we spend a lot of time to make sure we make informed decisions and not just do things to spite other commissioners. Commissioner Neptune, could you hold on just a moment, please? Because when, when we say that there was misinformation in the staff report, I want to give staff an opportunity to address that. So Arthur, could you address Commissioner Omakay's comment about the BRT area?
Yeah, from the urban, from the IMAPs I use based off Wake County, it shows where 101 North Bloodworth Street is in the Bus Rapid Transit area.
It is, but not on that line that you put it on in the presentation. It's on the New Bern line, which is two blocks away. As the former chair of the transit authority, I hear what you're saying, but the BRT line is the New Bern Avenue corridor.
Yes, Commissioner, I believe what the boundary is doing is providing a buffer area to say that people can actually reach that BRT transit area, reach that BRT transit line within a, within like a walk or bikeable distance, not that it's directly on the line.
No, I feel what you're saying, and even if you put it correctly in that presentation on New Bern Avenue, it still wouldn't be directly, you know, still be in the same parameters. I'm just saying, as presented, that is not where the BRT line is in the presentation.
I understand, Commissioner.
If I may, so the New Bern Bus Rapid Transit corridor will provide service on Edington Street, where the site is located, for the inbound route, and New Bern Avenue outbound. And then when those streets converge, the two services will take New Bern Avenue as the infrastructure is placed going eastward. So Edington Street will be served with Bus Rapid Transit inbound, and then specifically to the staff presentation, getting to the slide there, it does not show...
Would you want Arthur to go back to a slide so they can...
Oh, yeah. Would you go up to the transit slide?
The, with the bus routes or this one?
The routes, yes, thank you. Right, so this is showing Capital, Longview, Wake Med, and then the regional Zebulon-Windell Expressway. So it's not showing on this map specifically where Bus Rapid Transit will be located, but Bus Rapid Transit will be located on Edington Street and inbound and New Bern outbound. So in this section of the infrastructure planning for Bus Rapid Transit, they are on parallel streets. And then as you go east, when those streets converge into New Bern Avenue at Pool, they, the service will merge and exist there. So again, inbound BRT on Edington Street, coming from the east into downtown, and then outbound on New Bern, and they converge east of Pool Road.
It's a minor issue, but they're showing Bus Rapid Transit on East Street, not Edington.
This map is...
These are natural routes. About 110 and 15 are all natural routes. They're routes that exist today. They're not a part of the Bus Rapid Transit system.
Correct.
That transit map. But the other slide, if you go to the one where it requests frontage, I don't know if y'all can see this one?
Yeah.
This slide. 16. I'm just pointing out there where it shows that the Bus Rapid Transit...
I understand your point now. Sorry to interrupt you, but what that label is labeling is the larger, is the larger purple area is the Bus Rapid Transit area. It's not necessarily, necessarily designating Northeast Street here, but the purple that you see on this map is a quarter-mile buffer on the transit lines. So this is not mapping a route.
Where the Bus Rapid Transit is.
Yes, ma'am.
In the area.
Yes, ma'am.
Where it may be, okay? I just want that to be clear.
Yeah.
Transit is important.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Neptune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I want to thank our colleagues on staff for the presentation and the residents from the neighborhood who have, you know, taken time to be with us today, as well as the commission for the conversation. I do think, I mean, I'm really struck by just the nuance of the dialogue here with regard to the rezoning and the application, and just, you know, I also appreciate, as a commission, you know, as volunteers who, you know, live and work here, thinking deeply about what a community means, what a neighborhood means. And, you know, as someone who's come into this work, you know, initially through the schools, and of course you realize opportunities for our kids don't begin in any of the classroom, they start really at home, and then they're amplified by the neighborhoods in which we're trying to raise a family. I am struck, and I'm frankly impressed, by the community that exists in our historic Oakwood neighborhood, which, you know, at present is comprised of, you know, restaurants, bars. It's comprised of, you know, and there's at least one or two architecture offices that I'm aware of, that presently, you know, receive, I think, on occasion, you know, clients, and conduct operations in a fashion similar to an interior designer. You know, in terms of future employment, clearly, an office for the interior designer or an architect is, you know, going to be limited. It's not like a food hall with hundreds of, you know, potential employees, but, you know, you could envision a scenario where the architecture office or the interior design office might have two or three associates who perhaps also live in the neighborhood and are able to walk to work potentially. You can envision a scenario where the interior designer might actually take on clients who have, you know, residential properties within the context of the neighborhood and beyond. I guess I think what I'm, you know, struck by is, again, the nuance of this conversation, I think the thoughtfulness, I think everybody here at the table is trying to bring to it. And I just, I want to express my appreciation for that, while also acknowledging, you know, my, you know, sense of a neighborhood is found oftentimes in its mixture of uses and vitality. And I guess I'm grateful for the added consideration of our Historic Development Commission and the, again, thoughtful consideration of our planning commission. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neptune. I have a question for staff for confirmation. The future land use map designates this parcel as neighborhood mixed use?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so I guess that's my struggle. I mean, I hear the neighbors, but if it's designated neighborhood mixed use, and what is being requested is neighborhood mixed use, it's consistent?
It is consistent with the future land use map. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's inconsistent with the urban form map designation.
So as I think through this, I recall early in my tenure on the planning commission, we had a rezoning for daycare, I believe, in the Prince Hall District. And the conversation went back and forth, back and forth, and it kind of came down to it was inconsistent, because it was trying to remove the parcel from the historic overlay. And so that was inconsistent. We all really, really liked the use, but the conversation we had at the table and the way we were advised was, it's not so much about the use, it's about the zoning. So that's what I'm trying to reconcile within, in my mind here. It's, this is consistent with neighborhood mixed use. And as a planning commission, we don't get to say what happens with that neighborhood mixed use unless we do it through conditions. You can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this. So personally, I appreciate all the comments. I've read all of the emails and the public comments. I appreciate what the applicant is proposing, but if it's consistent with what the future land use map designates it, then unless we are proposing to change the future land use map, which I guess we would do if we denied this rezoning, I don't see a reason for me to oppose this, other than I just don't like them putting an architectural business here, which I don't think is my role as a planning commissioner. Commissioner Miller, then Commissioner O'Haver, Commissioner Omakay. And we do have a hard stop at 11, just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. I think you articulated the nuance of this case well. The future land use map does designate this parcel for neighborhood mixed use, and we have seen some comments that are against this because they thought NX was too intensive of a use, and they actually preferred office mixed use, which is, an office use is allowed within NX, but they wanted it more limited to have less commercial use, fewer commercial uses on the property. So, you know, I think there is some nuance about what the neighbors want and don't want. We heard from other neighbors that they did want the NX, but they wanted a more neighborhood-friendly, neighborhood-used, retail use within that. But at the end of the day, I go back to what you're saying, this is designated neighborhood mixed use. Office is allowed within neighborhood mixed use. This is consistent with how we're planning the area and this parcel in particular. It also will continue to be a historic overlay district and an NCOD, where no one's asking for removal from either of those. And the Raleigh Historic, RHDC recommends approval of this project because it continues to protect the integrity of the historic overlay district with respect to the facade of the structure. So I hear that some neighbors don't like the office use within NX, other neighbors don't like the idea of NX because they want it to be office, right? But ultimately, our goal and role on the planning commission is to, is to see what's an appropriate zoning entitlement, and I think this is.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner O'Haver?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Then Omakay, and then Commissioner Atwell, did you have any? Okay.
I do want to mention, I don't remember a lot of our previous cases, but when you mentioned the daycare in Prince Hall, that was, that was very disappointing that we did not approve that. I do remember that one, and I'm pretty sure I voted in favor of it.
Counsel did, though, so.
Yes.
It was a...
Yeah. And it's typical for us to change the future land use map, so I'm not too concerned about that. I also would like to state that I live on Bloodworth Street, I've lived there for over 20 years. Appreciate the history of the neighborhood, everything that the Society for Preservation of Historic Oakwood did back in the 70s with the highway. I get it, I'm part of the community. I live on Bloodworth Street, I walk my dog every morning in the area. Just on North Bloodworth Street, you do have Lewis Cherry's office, you have the Rewind Shop, you've got a salon, you've got Side Street Cafe. Further into the neighborhood, you have the Smoke Stack Cafe, which is a cool spot within the historic district. And that's not even going across Edington Street onto South Boulevard, all of the businesses that are on South Bloodworth. I'm just mentioning North Bloodworth Street. And I know those businesses because I frequent them and I walk by them daily. I believe that the fact that it has to go through the COA process is why I'm comfortable supporting this. And unfortunately, it's true, you can't stop demolition, so regardless of what the zoning is, it may be a different period of time before you can demolish it, but that doesn't change. So I understand the neighborhood, I live there, I'm part of it, I frequent the businesses there, and quite frankly, I don't, I don't see an issue with this proposed rezoning.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Haver. Commissioner Omakay?
What is the Prince Hall District now?
I'm sorry, I don't...
What is it now? Like, the Prince Hall District used to be an area that was owned and operated, land used and purchased and owned by Black and Brown people in this area. Homes that were there were mostly consistent of housing. There was the Prince Hall Lodge, which is there on, was that Person, no, Broad Street, that right now is in danger of even being there because of the rezoning, that not necessarily this planning commission, maybe it agreed to or not, or whatever city council is choosing to do, but to me, Prince Hall, it's just, it's a good example, but it's also a poor example, because I don't want what's happened to the Prince Hall District to happen to historic Oakwood.
And that's why I voted against that one. That was, it may be a poor example to you, but it was a relevant example for me, and that's why I brought it up.
It's a great example in the sense of, it's a good example for what should not happen. I don't mean a poor example in the sense of like how you brought it.
Right.
I just think that it's a good example of what we should not be
Right.
Using as a metrics to do moving forward.
I agree with that, but I think that, for me, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission, the fact that this applicant is maintaining the historic overlay, and it's staying within the NCOD, which the case that I had mentioned, they were proposing to pull it out, which is why we voted to recommend denial, because this one is remaining in it, anything they do has to go through RHDC, correct? So that's why I think I'm comfortable with it. RHDC still has to approve it, whether they do it today or whether they do it through the rezoning. The change is just, it's going to be NX, which is what it's proposed to be anyway. Commissioner Atwell, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Thank you, I'll be brief. This coincides with the future land use map, which I think is significant, it matches the comprehensive plan. I agree with previous comments about the makeup of communities. I don't think a community is just residential units. It requires schools and churches and parks and barber shops and tailor shops and all kinds of businesses to make it a really thriving community. I don't think these small businesses threaten the fabric of a community. In fact, especially locally-owned businesses, I think are instrumental to the strength of a local community. What I would normally take issue with would be the lack of a frontage, especially here along a future BRT corridor. In this instance, considering the NCOD, the wishes of the neighborhood, and the historical district, I think that leaving the urban frontage out on this case is appropriate, and so I'm happy to support this at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Other questions?
Sorry, I know you're trying to move us along.
No, that's okay.
It's just, we were talking about the nuances, one thing I forgot to mention, and it goes back to my memory, I don't remember what was on that site previously, but that home was built in 2006, just a point of clarification. That's a new home that's been built on that corner, so, and it took a while to get that home built, so I just wanted to point that out to folks.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Haver. Other questions or comments? If not, Commissioner Burnett, you wanted to make the motion?
I moved to rec, excuse me. One second. I move to recommend, recommend approval of zoning case Z2525, specifically because it includes conditions that'll mitigate the impact on adjacent properties and enables development of a constrained and underutilized site, and I think it'd just be great for the area.
Thank you. Does he need to read the statement as it appears?
If you modify the statement as it appears, you just need to vote on that motion, or does someone want to make a motion that matches?
Do you have the motion to recommend approval up? Just read that statement.
The rezoning request, I have that one.
Yes.
Yeah. I move to recommend approval of rezoning KZ2525. I move to recommend approval of rezoning case Z-2525.
I think the language that the city attorney is looking for is for you to say that you moved to adopt the proposed consistency statement, right?
Yeah, pull up the, in the attached materials.
Yes, yeah.
Look under approval and pull that up and just read that first statement.
I moved to recommend, recommend, I moved to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated September 23rd, 2005, containing the agenda materials and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
That's it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Burnett has moved, made the motion. Commissioner Miller has seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven to one. Commissioner Omakay, do you have any additional comments to make regarding your opposition or, for the record, or...
Nope. As long as my words that were said while having the discussion is clearly stated in some of ours.
You can check the meeting minutes for the next meeting and, and make sure your words are captured the way you want them to be. If they aren't, then during the next planning commission meeting, when we're talking about the minutes, you can make sure we get them the way you want them. Thank you. That was our last new business item. Other business, reported the chair, I don't have a report today. Commissioner, Vice Chair Fox is absent in excuse today, but she wanted to remind us that there is not quorum for committee of the whole. Is that correct?
The September committee of the whole meeting has been canceled.
Has been canceled.
The plan, the committee of the whole will have an item for discussion in October.
October, okay.
And we need for commissioners to please plan to attend so that we have a quorum for that meeting.
Yes. She wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the September meeting is canceled.
No meeting, September 5. The committee of the whole will need to meet October 23rd.
Can we get an idea of who can attend the October 23rd committee of the whole meeting?
It's at 4:00 PM.
Okay, we have quorum.
What time is it?
At four.
4:00 PM.
Great. Going down the line, Commissioner Otwell?
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Looking at the agenda for the text change committee, it did not show anything on the assistant director's report, but we just recently moved an item into text change. But I'm noticing a discrepancy, I think, between item D on today's agenda, which said it would move to 10, is it the 15th? Or on the...
You mean on the third Wednesday, correct?
Third Wednesday. I'm looking at the assistant director's report, and it says October 21st.
That's not right.
That's not right. So, we will meet on the 15th of October.
Right.
Do you want to do a quorum check?
Do we have a quorum? It's be Roberta and...
Wednesday, the 15th?
I can be there.
If we get Roberta, we should be okay.
Okay. Moving down the, yes? Oh, you're saying, okay, okay.
Moving back to the calendar.
Commissioner Miller?
There will be no strategic planning committee meeting in October. If anyone has a topic that they would like discussed in strategic planning, feel free to reach out.
Thank you. Commissioner Burnett? Commissioner Omakay?
God is good all the time, and all the time God is good.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Just to clarify, unfortunately, I'm not available for text change, sorry.
Commissioner Neptune?
No report.
Commissioner Shelburne? Thank you all. We'll go to Bynum for the report of the assistant director.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. I do want to mention that our November meeting schedule is unusual, and I want to call it to your attention, and also get a feel for quorum. Regularly scheduled meeting day for the planning commission in November for your first meeting would be November the 11th. That is a city holiday, it's a federal holiday, Veterans Day. We would very much like for the planning commission to meet on Wednesday, November the 12th, at 10:00 AM in this room. Can I get a feel for who? We, we definitely have things for you to discuss. Looking out, looking down the road, we know what's coming. Can I get a confirmation on quorum there?
Give me just a minute.
Are you have questions first? Are there, what questions do you have?
Well, you said our regular meeting scheduled for the 11th?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I got it for the 4th.
I had it on the 4th.
That would be the first Tuesday of the month.
The second and fourth?
Commission meets on the second and fourth Tuesdays.
Okay.
The 11th and the 25th in November.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, you're seeking quorum for November 12?
Other questions about, yes, sir.
I'm first one's brought in the time, is 10 instead of 9?
10 instead of 9. There's another meeting here in the morning, yeah.
All right. November 12th, 10:00 AM.
Other questions about Wednesday, November 12th, the day after Veterans Day, at 10:00 AM in this room?
10:00 AM on 12?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, as of now, but...
Well, I'm asking you to mark your calendars now. Plan to please be here.
I, I am not able to attend on that day. I have a standing all-day board meeting. Regrettably.
I can be there, I'm not sure. Wait, are you asking everybody? Like, I can be there.
Yes, I am asking.
I can be there.
Yeah. One, two, three, four. Five, six. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, Commissioner Miller has said she can't be there.
Correct. I just sent my email as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent.
That'll be my last meeting.
I'm learning that the calendar can't be updated.
No, it's a, it has to be, you have to make two series, one for the second Tuesday and one for the fourth Tuesday. Every other Tuesday just leaves you...
Doesn't work.
In the mud.
Or you could do like I do and just block out every Tuesday. I block out, no meetings on Tuesday, planning commission. Anything else, assistant director?
That was plenty.
Okay, well, is there anything else that needs our attention, commissioners? If not, then thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do. I enjoy working with you all. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.